I will be building a pull-up bar and an ab workout station. They're going to be made out of wood, pressure-treated wood, and then pulls and that will be installed on them. Aren't we made out of galvanized steel? And I'm going to use concrete to put them into the ground, three feet in the ground. Um, I believe you all received a letter and I have pictures of where the sites are for the project. And also the scale drawing of how the pull-up bar and ab workout bench will be built.
And Gavin, what is your projected timeline on that?
Towards the end of October and maybe until the next month.
Great.
And will you be coordinating with Audrey regarding, didn't we already order or get grant money to put some equipment, exercise equipment in Seabert?
We wrote in a grant through the AARP program and unfortunately, we did not receive that grant.
Okay.
So Gavin is doing us a favor of completing. Yeah, so it worked out very well.
Okay, thank you.
And Gavin, how about your funding? Are you gonna be searching for donations or?
Yes, I'm gonna ask like people for donations and I will reach out to local businesses and see if they're interested in donating the materials for the project.
And has yours gone to the Boy Scouts for approval yet?
Yes, my trip committee has approved the project.
Thank you.
Well, that's really exciting. And I know we do, we did receive your packet of information. And the two pieces of equipment are spaced out in the back and around the trail and to the woods in clearings. I think it's a cool spot, both of them.
Thank you.
I just have one question, one question. So they're gonna be made out of wood and I don't remember reading. Did it say it's gonna be treat, pre-treated lumber? Or is it going to be something that requires a finish?
It's going to be pressure-treated wood, yes.
Okay, okay.
We actually need a motion for each of these projects so that we can vote on them. Erin, would you mind doing that for both of the Boy Scouts?
Should I do them individually?
Yes, please.
I would like to make a motion to approve Nate Gink's Eagle Scout project in, in and around, in front of and around the firehouse in Camp.
Any other questions for Nate? All right, all those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, Nate, you're on. All right, Karen?
Good luck, Nate. I would like to make a motion to approve Gavin Nunn's Eagle Scout project, including two workout stations along the Goddard Trail in Seabert Park.
Second.
Any questions for Gavin? Any additional questions? All right, all those in favor of Gavin Nunn's Boy Scout project, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, Gavin, you got your work cut out for you.
Thank you, Gavin.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you both.
Thanks, Nate and Gavin.
Yeah, great work.
Mark, is there anything else in your mayor's report?
No, that's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, this brings us to our time for public comment. Do we have any public comments, Pat?
You go to the bottom, please. If you click on participants, you can find the, well, there's three people that just hit it already.
Yeah.
What we're doing now. There we go. You can find the hand to lower, raise your hand, and then I will acknowledge you by your name and I'll, I will ask you to unmute. So the first is Tanya Rand. I'm gonna lower her hand and ask her to unmute herself.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just had a quick question, kind of observation. With the Shaper Park and the handicap parking, since we were just talking about that. The only space that I noticed, and I don't know if I missed something, but the space is on the side of the hill. And if somebody's in a wheelchair, that's not really helpful because they'll just roll down the hill. So you really need a flat spot to make it truly handicap accessible.
Thanks for that, Tanya.
Okay, yeah, that's all. I just wanted to, I didn't know, I didn't know if there was another spot or if that was just it. You know, my husband's in a wheelchair, so I just kind of noticed these things.
Yeah, we can, we can bring that back to the engineer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good. The next is Jennifer Hoover. I'm gonna lower her hand and ask her to unmute. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Good evening. I offered some of our comments during the public hearing regarding the proposed ordinance relative to the parks. I will reiterate that I would ask that you delay consideration of the ordinance this evening so that you could provide more clarity and specify access control facilities within the ordinance. Amongst some other residential comments that were offered, both verbally and via email tonight. Also, just a point of observation. It might have been prudent to offer a public comment before the vote on the Eagle Scout projects. But that's just an observation, but thank you for your consideration.
Okay, lowered Tim Jackson's hand. Go ahead and speak, Tim.
I wanted to provide the borough with an update on some borough traffic trends that I've exposed to some on the, on this call. As a borough resident for some time, I've driven along the bypass just about every day. And in that time, I've noticed what to me appeared to be a large number of people of color who were being stopped for traffic violations. After that observation, I submitted a right-to-know request through the borough and obtained that stop information for the month of, month of March 2019. In that initial analysis, I found that there was an apparent police bias within the data. But knowing that there was only one month of information, I then submitted a subsequent right-to-know request. Top line, here's what I found. About 23% of the stops in the borough involved people of color, whereas only 5% of the county, Cumberland County, are people of color. Most of those, 70% were male people of color. And then a lot of the, the same types of infractions committed by both people of color as well as their white counterparts showed me that there was also an implicit or explicit bias within that data set. Meaning that most of the people who were stopped for similar or the same type of infractions were, received very different outcomes. And that went up and down the line. There was also 100% more likelihood that people of color were to be arrested in Camp Hill Borough versus their white counterparts. As a result of my findings, Chief Margerson was gracious enough to meet with myself and a couple other concerned citizens to share these findings. We did so about a month or so ago. He has indicated to me that there were several steps that he was already in the process of taking with his department. And then there were some changes that a few of us who met with him also requested that the chief make on top of those that were already in process. And primarily, the additional changes were in terms of education for implicit, explicit bias, some additional thoughts that I might have personally with his, with his department. And then I'd say, most importantly, some changes within the summary report that is currently being published, I guess, every year. I've requested a number of changes with that so that that could be measured and monitored. And the reason why I bring this up, I wanted the borough to be aware that the data suggests that there's an apparent police bias with stops within the borough. And I am happy that the chief has agreed to partner with myself and others to change that trajectory in which data leads us. And I'd like to understand or know who, if anyone in the borough would like to see that analysis or be part of some of these conversations if appropriate.
Tim, we've talked about some of this in Personnel Committee, having some of these conversations. And so as the Chair of Personnel Committee, I would be very interested in being involved in these conversations. And I think the Personnel Committee would probably be interested in, in, in taking a look at your analysis as well. In consultation with Chief Margerson, I had asked for similar data earlier this year and, and looked at it as well. So it's definitely something that has been on our mind. And we would also likewise, I think, want to just make sure that all of our practices and policies are fostering inclusiveness and, and not showing bias. So I think even beyond the Police Department, like, it's just something that the Personnel Committee should be considering.
And likewise, Tim, I'm the Chair of Public Safety, so I'd love to be involved in your conversations going forward. And I appreciate your analysis on your own and approaching Chief, who has been really proactive this year with these types of things. So I'm glad we're all talking about it.
Chief, you have any comments you wanna add?
Our chief is technological.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yes, as Tim said, we've met and we've been emailing a couple of times back and forth. One of the things that we're doing right now that's sort of in progress that Tim alluded to is that we're refining the data collection. We, we don't think that we have kept totally accurate statistics specifically in terms of a better explanation of the context of many of these stops and what, what may have contributed or not contributed to citations or arrests. And so we're gonna be meeting Tim and myself. We're gonna be talking about that further going forward. We've also invited Tim, although we haven't set the meeting date yet, in the near future, he's going to come and meet with us with our department during one of our staff meetings and discuss this issue. And, and so we do think there are some issues there that we, we would like to, we'd like to get better and more accurate in terms of the data collection and some of the surrounding circumstances that contribute to arrest or not arrest or citation or non-citation. So I think we've had a productive discussion and we plan on continuing that dialogue with Tim. And, and certainly with the committees as well with whatever groups of members of council that wanna participate in that. We can keep you apprised of that as well.
Chief, thank you, Tim. Um, Pat, I don't, oh, there's one.
Got one more. Mike Vogel has a comment. I'm gonna lower his hand. Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Since we're on a topic of inclusiveness regarding the public hearing on the park ordinance, I just wanted to make the public comment in the borough. Meaning for the record, I think that should be tabled with a little bit more clarity around languaging that was discussed in the public hearing. Firstly, I don't even think really nothing needs to be done. It's a waste of time. If we're talking about inclusiveness that Mr. Jackson was just talking about, the way those ordinances are publicized and advertised to the public, it may not be your intent. But it looks what it, like it is. We're not a very inclusive community. And what I'd like to know sometimes, and maybe I can't get all these subcommittees too, is when an ordinance is proposed, and I don't know if it's done already, I can't follow everything as, what, what stemmed from this? It was, in this instance, it was one instance of a basketball court being damaged. What, is it one instance? Is it 10 instances? Is it a myriad of complaints from residents? What are those complaints? It just seems if it's one thing that stems an entire, triggers an entire ordinance change because of one thing that occurred, it just seems kind of arbitrary. And I realize the governing of local town can be cumbersome and, and all that, but just the way things are communicated, advertised and written just doesn't look well to an outsider. And if we're looking to be inclusive, then when those things are written, maybe you should have it, you know, look at it and go, how is this gonna be perceived to the public? Because perception will be reality sometimes. Thank you.
Okay, and we have Karen. I'm gonna lower her hand. Karen, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, I just, I wanted to thank Tim Jackson for doing that analysis. I know it was not simple. It was a lot of, a lot of stuff, a lot of information to go through. And also thank Chief Margerson for meeting with us. I also was at that meeting. And I am really glad to hear that people do want to dig into this a little bit more. And I'm talking now about Tim Jackson's look at the traffic stop data, dig into this a little bit more, understand it better, begin to record it better. Because I think data is one of the ways that we can kind of see where we are at a baseline on certain issues and then think about where we want to be and how to measure moving toward that. So I think some of the things that have been talked about, maybe around training, around training, around bias, things like that. You know, the, I'm glad to hear the willingness to, to look at that data and record it in a way that will help us to measure progress. And, and the other thing I'll, I'll say is just, you know, there, I think there are a lot of things that, you know, there is both implicit and explicit bias. We all have biases and we often are unaware of them. And, and when a lot of things are, are left to sort of individual discretion, then those biases can sometimes, can sometimes have an effect. And so I think the other thing to potentially think about is, you know, when there are things like, you know, Chief Margerson mentioned, looking at what might lead to, to tickets, you know, citations versus not citations or citations versus warnings. Sometimes it can be helpful to put some specific policies in place to, to make it really clear what might lead to a citation versus what might not. Especially in that process where you're maybe trying to move the needle on some things that, that seem to be being done differently with different groups of people. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Karen.
I don't see anybody else.
There's a comment from a puppy.
Yep.
Okay, there is another public comment at the end of the meeting, just as a reminder. All right, we are gonna jump right in then to public safety with Erin Bruman.
Sorry, I'm trying to find my documents here. Um, okay, so public safety, I just have one comment ahead of time. I just want to let everyone know that our next public committee meeting is on October 22nd at 4:30. Um, via Zoom unless something, you know, arises where we need to have a sooner meeting. And at that time, we're gonna review a crosswalk priorities list for 2021 and the paving schedule, which goes along with laying crosswalks in the streets. So again, that is October 22nd at 4:30. And, um, Mayor Simpson, do you want to do your report?
Sure. Real quick, police report for the month of August. Total number of complaints or calls handled by officers was 816. There's a, some training that the chief has set up, the next, next training that's coming up, which is next week, is effective in constitutional policing. It's gonna be held in Prosser Hall. And it, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, it is open to other departments. Is that correct?
Hold on, Steve, you're muted. There you go.
Yes, we have a number of other departments from Cumberland County and even a couple from Dauphin and York that will have officers in attendance.
Okay. And today, the chief and I spoke and the chief came up with a new initiative. He's calling it the Camp Hill Police School Visit Initiative. And the goal of this initiative is to, now, we do have the school resource officer that's in the schools every day, five days a week. But as time permits, we want other officers that are on duty to stop in, whether it be on the playground, maybe walk into the school, just to get to know the kids, get to know the facilities, get to know the teachers, and just, you know, show the kids that they're out there and, and they're good guys. So I think it's a great initiative. It's gonna start the 15th, Chief?
Yes, September 15.
Okay. So it's kind of an informal thing. And as I said, as time permits, the, the officer's going to take part in this. So that's the police report.
Fire department. Real quick, one comment on that, you know, thanks, Chief, because we've been talking about that in public safety now for a little bit. I think that's a great idea. This morning, when we took my son to school, he saw Officer Capers, I think he was acting as the crossing guard. And Zachary said, oh, that's the officer. He always talks to us at school and we see him at school. He's a really nice guy. So I think, you know, that's a good thing to get the other officers involved in and, and keep that going. So it's working.
Great.
Great.
Hey, Fire Department report in August, we ran 36 calls, spent 88 hours on those calls. So that's it, Erin.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to just point out that I have seen officers on bikes lately, and I love that in our small walking community because the eyes and ears on the ground notice things that you don't notice within a car and just the community interaction has been really great. Thanks again, Chief. Um, but now I'd like to make a motion to approve a handicap parking permit for 209 South 15th Street. And I actually believe it's two permits.
Second.
Second.
This has been ongoing discussion in both committee and council and with backed-up documentation for the need. I feel like we've all been very supportive of this.
Anybody have any questions for Erin? Okay, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor of the parking permits for 209 South 15th Street, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Pat, the Borough Manager's report.
We are finalizing the SALDO. We were working on some lighting provisions. Those provisions have been provided to Gannett Fleming to incorporate into the final document for the SALDO. We have a committee meeting next week. Hopefully, I will have all of the, all of that compiled and give it to the committee for their review. The Gannett Fleming has already provided an overview of some major topics to the committee. And hopefully with the lighting, we can finalize all of that and get that moving forward and get that document finally off the books. Staff is currently working on the budget. We had a finance committee meeting this morning going, going over some kind of thousand-foot view versions of the, the budget with some modeling that we're looking at over the next couple of years. But staff is specifically working on their departmental budget. Some, some, some department has already given me theirs. I will be taking those, compiling them and organizing the budget with the conjunction with the Finance Committee to provide to council here at the end of the month into October. So we are in the process of working through that and it is going well. The pool is now closed. The pool staff did a wonderful job this year. We had a bunch of variables to dodge and duck through. Audrey did a great job of working with Sean. Sean did a great job of working with Chris. Chris did a great job of communicating with Sam. Everybody was involved in the pool this summer. We were the, one of the only places that were open. So, you know, they did a great job. We really had no issues. We really had minimal complaints. So while we didn't have the attendance numbers that one would assume maybe we would have had with the hotter weather, nobody got hurt. We had no COVID exposures. We had no major issues. So I will take that as a massive win for the summer. Yeah, big win. And I am working right now on the grant submission for the CFA funding for the Streetscape project. That's due September 30th. We'll be submitting that and hopefully we'll get some feedback. I've reached out to some people to help with that process and talk to the right people and see what we can do. You know, there's a low probability of getting it, but it's not, it never hurts to go after the funding and minimize tax resources going towards these projects. So end of report and thank you.
All right, thanks, Pat.
You're welcome.
Finance, Zach Williard.
Okay, thank you. To start off, I'd like to make a motion, all right, to pay the checks for August 2020 in the amount of $1,075,733.69.
Second.
Questions for that? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye. Aye.
All right, item B, discussion and possible action to approve.
All right.
All right.
Wait, say it again. I lost you.
Somebody said something, I stopped. I'd like to make a motion to approve the police MMO in the amount of $64,377.
Second.
Thank you.
So Pat, can you give us the quick skinny on that? We do it each year.
Sure. So each year, you have to certify the MMO, which means minimum municipal obligation. That means if the borough were to receive no state aid towards pension proceeds, what the borough would have to allocate in cash to make the borough, borough pension solvent. The borough pension fund is currently solvent. We end up not owing any money at the end of the year. But what this does is it looks, it's actually a year behind. So you are certifying that if we were to have a crisis where we would be an issue where we would know have no state aid or state aid would be cut through the budget, that we would, we would not, we would, you, the MMO would be the minimum municipal obligation that we are entitled to pay to keep the pension solvent.
And when Pat, when Pat says solvent, you know, I'd just like to add that the two pension funds, uniform and non-uniform, are actually funded at 100%.
Right.
You know, not typical for pension funds. So, you know, we're very solvent.
Yep. There are communities that get into what's called actuarial smoothing, which is just a bad situation when they, when they, their funds aren't, aren't funded and they end up having to smooth out what they, what they owe long range and it just gets ugly. But we're in a good spot.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, all those in favor of approving the police MMO in the amount of $64,377, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, next one.
All right, item C, make a motion to approve the non-uniform MMO in the amount of $111,488.
Second.
So Pat, same, same explanation applies here.
Same, same thing applies. Yep, there's just.
Amount for a different amount of people and a different, you know.
Yeah, but the next one will be slightly different. The, the CBA plan is different, but these two are the same, the same thing.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right, thank you.
Okay, and item D, I'd like to make a motion to approve the cash benefit pension plan MMO in the amount of $20,654.20.
Second. Thanks.
So Pat Duke, can you give us a explanation on that one again?
I can. So in April of 2000, well, March of 2016, the borough created an ordinance that created a pension plan that is a cash benefit plan. It's not a 401K per se, but it is a, employees in this particular plan have their paychecks reduced by a certain percentage put into the CBA plan and then the borough puts in a percentage into the fund. So it's similar to a 401K, but it's not, it's a public cash benefit account. So it's a portable plan program that if employee retires or leaves, if they move to another municipality that has a PMRS plan, it goes with them or they can withdraw it, unlike the defined benefit plan, which is the employee works here for a set period of time. They vest and then they receive a paycheck until, if they meet the criteria of the pension ordinance, then they receive a paycheck until they, they're die, they die and then their survivor receives it. The CBA plan is a more direct cash from the employee and matched by the, the borough into a portable cash account. There are two employees in that account.
And Pat, this, this plan is for all, the employees hired since 2016, March of 2016.
It's all, you know, right, also all future employees.
All future employees. Well, to clarify, all, all employees that are not in collective bargaining entities.
Correct. And the benefits of the plan for the borough is, once you meet obligations annually, there's no further obligation. So
You're done.
Bring the stock market tanks and our funds go down and other pension plans, we don't contribute any money.
Correct.
Catch up. There's no surplus. Once you budget each year, that's it.
You got it. Nail on the head, Rich. You got it. That's, so that's that one.
Okay.
Any other comments for Pat or Zach? All right, all those in favor of approving the Cash Benefit Pension Plan MMO, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, thank you.
And Lee, just one more comment before we move on. So, so going back to the budget, you know, it's budget season. We have a long budget season. It's longer than I think some municipalities. We've been doing a lot of extra things this year, projecting out multiple years. We started doing that with sewer, the sewer fund and the stormwater fund last year. Now we're doing it with the general fund. And the value of doing that, you know, shows its, its head when you have COVID and you have other types of financial crunches that we're experiencing currently. So, you know, we're going to have a lot more discussion to come. There's three budget meetings in October. One every week after the council meeting where we're going to go through all this. And, you know, we've had a number of finance committee meetings to go through that, and, you know, we're going to have a slightly different discussion this year than what we've had in previous years. And that's, you know, I think obvious. Most people are having that same discussion. So just want to bring that up again for everyone. And that would be it.
All right. Thank you. All right, Bonnie Benz, Public Works.
Okay, just a quick announcement about where we are. We did have a Public Works meeting last week, and we discussed three items. First, we had been looking at the possibility of attaching military medallions to the columbarium. And so as a committee, we do feel it would be nice for residents who have a niche there to be able to put an emblem, have an emblem representing military service. So toward that end, Pat and Sam are going to look at the cemetery rules and make some modifications. And then the committee will, we will present that to council next month. So you can see what the emblems look like, what the modifications would be to the rules, and then council can choose to approve or not approve that change. Second, we're also in the beginning stages of looking into a proposal from PPNL regarding the replacement of our streetlights with LEDs. We have not arrived at a recommendation yet. Pat is seeking answers to some of our questions from PPNL. And PPNL did provide us with some communities that have already converted to LED. So we do want to take a look actually driving around in those communities, whether it's the main street or their residential areas, just to see what the impact of lighting is, because LEDs are brighter than our existing streetlights. So we want to make sure that our concerns, if we would agree to do something like that, would not negatively, you know, any changes would not be a big negative impact to our community. So that's something we're looking into. And lastly.
Bonnie, real quick on that one, just, I thought it was important to note that, again, we were not under any type of time crunch there. opposed to us, but we don't have to respond by next month or anything. So it was definitely take some time to figure that out.
And actually, to your point, yes, we don't, we, there is nothing that says we have to do it at all. It is just a proposal by PPNL. It would save us a little bit of money. But it's, you know, not something that we have to do.
And we would want sure that it was in agreement with the lighting specifications outlined in the SALDO.
That is correct, too. Yes. And then last, we had a discussion about the plantings at, in Willow Park. And I know we learned about what Sam's maintenance, you know, what he, how he had been informed to maintain it for these first two years when those plantings were, you know, being, you know, solidified. So Pat was going to have a conversation with HRG, and we're going to have a further conversation about any changes we want to make to the way in which those plantings are maintained. So those were our discussions last week. We have nothing to bring forward in terms of for approvals. So we are down to the engineers' report. And Mike, do you want to present those before I offer a motion?
Sure. There are three items outlined in my engineer's report. I see two of them are on the agenda. The third item, we weren't sure if it would be ready for action tonight, but it is. So I'll bring that up, and we can, we can proceed or not, depending on how council wants to handle it. But for the first two, these are both related to the paving contract. Contractors progressing smoothly on that job. Both contractors, we have one contract for the paving work and one for the line marking. Both of them have submitted pay applications. We've reviewed both of them and found them to be in order and in accordance with the work that's been performed so far. So the first one, we're requesting approval of payment application number one to JVI Group in the amount of $142,973.21.
Second.
Well, I think.
I guess I have.
Never mind, Mike. You're not part of council.
That's right. Sorry, Mike.
I'll repeat it. Okay. So I would like to make a motion to approve the application for payment number one in the amount of $142,000, $142,973.21 to JVI Group Incorporated.
Okay.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Okay, the second item that we have is a payment application from DE Gamel, which is the striping contractor of the paving job. They have submitted payment application number one in the amount of $3,525.22. We reviewed it and found it to be in order and are requesting council approval to pay that application.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion for contract number two to recommend approval of application for payment number two in the amount of $3,525.22 to DE Gamel Incorporated.
Second.
Second.
Any questions for Mike or Bonnie? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. Okay. Another motion?
Mike, I'm guessing paving's going smoothly and on schedule since there's no rain and.
It is. Yeah, that job's progressing pretty well. The concrete formwork is pretty much complete at this point. As of last week, the contractor had started a little bit of milling, and this work, the week they're working on some scratch course paving. Next week or the week after, they should start working on top course paving. So I think that's when people are really going to start to notice the, the improvement. I did have one other item in my engineer's report. This is for the borough's maintenance and emergency contract. There's a contractor on retainer to fix problems as they come up. They're on call. And for the last several years, that's been Rogel. That contract had expired, and we needed to rebid the contract. We did that. We got bids in yesterday. And we reviewed the bids today and found that the submitted documents were in order, and the low bidder was Rogel once again. So we would request that council authorize executing that contract with Rogel for maintenance and emergency services in the amount of $210,415. The amount is based upon a standard set of equipment and labor that would be provided. The actual amount of the contract is impossible to predict. It'll be depending on what, what kind of issues come up over the next three years. It is a three-year contract. But that set of labor and materials and equipment was the same for all contractors so that they could bid it on a fair basis. And on that basis, Rogel was a low contractor once again.
Mike, does that mean that the, the 210,000 figure, that's based on some unit costs, or that's a not to exceed, or what?
That's based on unit costs. So we looked at about what they had spent in previous years, multiplied it out over three years, and tried to use a reasonable mix of the different equipment and labor types that they would be using based on the type of work that they do. But really, the purpose of that was to get a reasonable and uniform bid package together so that all contractors could price it fairly. The actual amount will depend on how many sewer lines break in the middle of the night and things like that that we need to call them out to fix.
Retainer? I'm sorry, did you use the term retainer, or did I hear that wrong?
Well, it's a contractor that we have on call.
Okay, but we don't pay, we don't pay him that much. Okay.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, if I did say the word retainer, that's probably not the right terminology. It's an on-call contract.
No, that makes sense. Sorry, Zach.
I was just going to say, how long is this contract valid for then?
Three years.
And is this something we have in our budget because of the typical yearly payouts that we've had?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's allocated, again, as Mike is saying, that number could be, if no pipes break, zero. But we do, we do allocate it out of the sewer fund to pay for this particular contract.
Specific to sewer, right?
Specific to sewer, yes.
And just to ask the obvious, we're satisfied with his work over his previous contract period?
Yeah, Rogel's good. They do good work.
So, wait, hold on, because this wasn't on the agenda.
So we didn't, the public didn't have time to review it. Before Bonnie makes her motion, I'd like to call a specific public comment for this one item. Does anyone have any comments? Please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see any hands being raised. So Bonnie, go ahead and make your motion.
Okay, I just have one question. So is the 210, $210,415, is that a maximum amount that we would pay them, or is that an amount we pay them regardless of whether or not they do any work?
Good, Mike, good.
It's, the amount that you pay them will almost certainly be something different than that, higher or lower, but it'll be dependent on exactly what you call them out to do. The numbers that were generated in the bid were based on an assumed suite of services, just so that everyone could bid it on an equitable basis. The actual suite of services they provide will be depending on what kind of emergencies you have over the next three years. I think that in the last several years, they've come in lower than 70,000 per year. You haven't, you haven't used them this much. Hopefully, that, that trend continues.
The idea is that you have someone onboard for a project that might arise under an emergency that you competitively bid. So you know you're getting good prices, even though there's an emergency situation that wouldn't necessarily require bidding. So you generally get a little better pricing by bidding it in advance for emergency purposes.
I'd like to have this, you know, I think you did a great job. I think Rogel's did a good job, it's a good contract, assuming legally reviewed it. The challenge is we, we don't get to see it or review it prior to two minutes before it shows up. I mean, I haven't seen it. The challenge is how do we, we've had this come up numerous times about having to submit the Friday before the council meeting. So the public's aware, we can review it before we vote on it. I don't think there's anything shady. I think it's a good thing. They're a great company. But how do we prevent this in the future? Have this discussion. We set rules. We have to have everything submitted for the budget of the agenda five days in advance, and we keep breaking our own rules.
Yeah, and I apologize for that. We, we realized kind of late in the game that Rogel's contract that they were previously under had expired. So we hustled, we put a bid package together in, in less than a week and got it out on the street so that we could get a bid and get somebody under contract so that you wouldn't be, you know, left hanging with nobody as, as an emergency contractor. And the only way to do that and give contractors a couple of weeks to bid on it, and especially because of Labor Day holiday, was to get it in yesterday, which is terrible timing as far as the, how it coincides with the, with the council meeting. I added a note to my engineer's report that this was out there, that we didn't have the final numbers as of the issuance of the report, but it was something that was pending. At this point, we have reviewed the bids, and they did, they did submit everything that they were required to bid. It could be acted upon from that standpoint. But certainly can understand if you don't want to act upon it and take a month to, to look at it, that's another option as well. We just tried to get it through as quickly as possible, like I said, because the previous contract had expired.
We've been happy with their work, correct?
Yeah.
I deal with them a lot, and I, we're very, very happy with their work. It's, they, they've, that contract was in place when I came here. I worked with them in my former place of work. They, they do a nice job. They're trustworthy. They care about what they do. They do nice work.
They were a contractor for the stadium, also a stadium project, and tennis courts and so forth.
Yes, they're, they're a general contractor. They do a lot of sewer and stormwater work. Yep.
I said, Mark, concern about the process and procedures, not necessarily the contract or the work they do. How to avoid this in the future?
I appreciate that we knew it. I appreciate that we knew it could be coming, even though we didn't have it. So I feel, I feel personally, I feel okay with it, because we knew that it was out there and and it was, they were the low bidder. So I, given that they were the low bidder and they're our current company under contract, I personally feel okay voting on it tonight, so that we're not left with somebody without a contract should there be an emergency.
I know, we'll have an emergency tonight.
Yeah.
That was more about delaying. It was more about.
Don't say that.
Again and again.
Sorry, Sam.
All right. So I will make a motion. I'll make a motion for approval to execute a contract for the maintenance and emergency contract awarded to Rogel in the amount of $210,000, $210,415 for a three-year contract. Did I say that right?
You did. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I think it's, it, it's a little misleading perhaps to say the contract is for $210,000, because it's not. The contract is for services as needed, which will be billed as used. The 210 was, you know, relevant to the bidding process, but we're not approving $210,000.
Yeah, maybe just reword that a little bit.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Okay. And so I'll revise my motion. I'll seek approval to execute a contract for maintenance and emergency with Rogel.
We're good. Yes.
For a second.
Okay.
Okay. Did the same person second it?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? All right, all those in favor of the service contract, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Thank you, Mike and Bonnie.
One more thing. I just wanted to check with Sam. Sam, did you have any information that you wanted to provide?
I do have a couple of things I'd like to share with all of you. So thanks, Bonnie, for giving me the opportunity. So just to elaborate a little bit more on Mike's update with the paving contract. All the ramps are done and seeded, and I don't know if anybody's been around, but the grass is looking very, very well. It's nice and green. Thermal plastic work will be scheduled for next week or early the following week. All roads are milled, and the scratch and leveling course is about 90% complete. They will start placing wearing course tomorrow, and we're hoping that by next Wednesday, the wearing course will be completed. So the paving contract is, is coming through quite nicely. The school signal on Chestnut Street is up and operational. If, you know, if you drive by there and you see it, that will flash three times during the day, morning, lunch, and afternoon, every day that school is in session. I wanted to give a brief update on spring. Beginning in the spring of this year, we were asked to find a glyphosate alternative because of the issue stemming from glyphosate-based chemicals. And we have kind of moved through a progression of a couple of different chemicals, and we're using a product now called Cheetaprol, and it's a non-glyphosate-based product. It's, we're having very good. It's, we're having very good luck with it. I think we're gonna continue with this in the spring and we'll see where it goes. And as we continue use, I will let everyone know how that's going. But I think it's good to know that we're not using glyphosate-based products anymore when we spray throughout the borough. I wanted to just take a moment to say, remind people who are here listening about taking time to trim trees as we approach fall and leaf season. It's really important that you keep your trees trimmed at the gutter, 12 feet above the gutter line. That's important for us to get up close to the curb for sweeping winter maintenance and leafing season. It's hard on our equipment when we have to try to get close to the gutter line and branches are hanging out over the curb. And then finally, I just wanted to add that, you know, as fall approaches and more leaves are on the ground, just remember that, you know, roads become slippery when leaves, roads are covered and they're wet and you're stopping distance with the kids that we have and parents walking in the borough right of way. Just be cautious of that as we're approaching another fall leaf season. That's all I have.
Thanks, Sam. Good day, Bonnie.
That's it.
Okay, community and business relations, Carl Schultz.
Thank you, Lee. So a few quick items on the streetscape. You know, we're in the process of changing the concept, translating the concept into design and engineering. We have a special meeting at the end of August. Gibson Thomas will take the feedback from that presentation and present us with a plan. For those of you who didn't attend back in, end of August, it was really about the different challenges and some different options we had. It wasn't a plan per se. So based on the feedback from the presentation, they'll come back with something. I know that at least a couple of us felt like we needed a little better visual representation of what it might look like. They are going to present that to us. So we'll get that hopefully end of this month, take another look, you know, both design aspects and start to look at cost as well. So we'll keep that moving along. Couple other items, the Harvest Hop is this Saturday on Market Street. That's one of the regular events with the merchants welcoming people. This event is nice because it's done in conjunction with the Earl Besh Project to provide, I believe it's food, but perhaps supplies also to families in need. So there'll be backpacks to collect things at the different merchants. One of the merchants participating this Saturday is a brand-new merchant in Camp Hill, Cocoa Creek Chocolates, which will be opening at 18th and Market, as long as I have that street right. And Cocoa Creek Chocolates also will be having their ribbon cutting on Monday at 12:30. And I believe folks have been invited to that. So that's my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Parks and Rec, Aaron Broman.
Okay, I'm back. Thank you, Lee. Um, okay, so there's a few items, note, Parks and Rec. Thank you, Gavin, for joining us tonight and presenting your project. I want to point out that on October 27, Camp Hill Borough will held a Halloween costume contest that we do every Halloween. It just looks a little different this year without the parade. So either check online to our virtual newsletter or grab your newsletter off the pile on your table that you pile things up on. And it's on page six and it outlines the different categories, how to register and what the process is. And I can't wait to see everyone. Zach, I hope your family isn't planning to take away all the prizes again this year, although they were adorable. Next is, every year, Camp Hill Borough holds a volunteerism award application process. Last year, we awarded Lynette Purche with Volunteer of Year in Camp Hill for her dedication to our students and families in Camp Hill. This year, the application is online on the website. You can search it or if you need assistance, just email me. Eroman@camphillborough.com. But the applications are due by November 2nd and then we announce the winner in December at the council meeting. So volunteer award applications, please send them in. No volunteer is too large or too small. Next, I just want to touch, I think this is the last point. I just want to touch on the Shaver Park litter situation that is ongoing. It's an educational experience that Audrey is putting a lot of effort into. And we're not trying to shame any child with their litter. But I would like parents to discuss this at home. Please bring out the trash you brought in. There are receptacles all over for this that have lots of room in them for more trash. And if you are in the park and you see litter, thank you for picking it up. This will get better with time, I'm sure. And, okay, those are my notes for Parks and Rec. Moving along. In terms of my discussions and possible actions, I would like to, based on the discussion in our public hearing at 6:00 PM this evening, I would like to make a motion to table the vote on the proposed ordinance, O223, to take it back to committee for further clarification.
Second. We had a lot of comments and questions at the public hearing. Are there any additional questions from council to clarify? Okay.
I just want to say thank you to everyone who did attend this PM meeting or who sent in comments and concerns. I always appreciate public interaction and attendance. So, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor of tabling, Aaron, is it just for a month, until the next meeting?
Yes, I, well, I would like to take it back to committee to discuss clarification on the language.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor of tabling the approval of the ordinance until the Parks and Rec Committee can review it one last time? Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Anything else, Aaron?
I don't think so. No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Richard Garen, planning and zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Driford. Your monthly parts in the packet and just want to note that we're still doing great construction projects in additions to the borough to 274,000 dollars for the permits last month. Item B, the form of motion to approve the Camp Hill School District Hoover Elementary Land Development Plan.
I'm sorry, was that a motion?
It was.
I need a second, please.
Second.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to go through, Chris can go through how well the dishes worked with he and the staff and then they can answer any questions someone might have. Is that okay, Chris?
It'll be fine. It was a pleasure to work with the school district. They did address a lot of the different questions and/or concerns that the planning commission had and that the staff had, as well as our partners again at Fleming. We worked in concert with each other to correct a bunch of things. If you don't mind, I wouldn't mind turning it over to Roger Phillips and let him just go down over like the waiver lists and things like that and get that out for public record and then we can go from there if that'd be okay.
Great.
I'd be happy to, thank you. Yeah, the project is requiring three waivers, waiver from Section 502 with regard to the public improvements along Deanhurst Avenue Public Right-of-Way, a waiver for Section 607 of the code, curbing along 24th Street, and a waiver of Section 402 to consider, for council to consider this plan for approval as a preliminary slash final and not the two-step typical preliminary plan then final plan. And Gannett Fleming had issued a review letter this morning, I believe, that you all have seen. And they, the comments that are remaining on this, I would consider to be minor housekeeping comments, very minor, that will be addressed after recording.
And I would recommend as a point of order, I would recommend going through each of the waivers, approving those separately from the plan and then approve the plan subject to any outstanding comments from Gannett Fleming's September 9th comment letter.
In that case, let me know when we get to that point and I'll ask Chris to read them and I'll make the motion because I don't have the wording in front of me. But are there other questions before we go forward with the motions?
I'm just curious, what the waiver, what is the waiver for? Could you say a little bit more at Deanhurst? What is the improvement that needs a waiver?
Why don't we go ahead and read the waiver? I think that would be a help if it's appropriate time with council and with your indulgence, I'll go ahead and read it if that's okay.
So Chris, in the form of motion, I move we pass the waiver that Chris is about to read.
I don't know, we might have to read it first.
Yeah.
Okay, in conjunction with the above referenced project, the applicant respectfully requests consideration of the following waiver from the requirements of the following section of the Borough Camp Hill Subdivision and Land Development Plan. Number 502, public improvements within Deanhurst Avenue Public Right-of-Way. The applicant is requesting that the requirements to provide public improvements within the right-of-way for Deanhurst Avenue be waived, including, but not limited to, providing additional paving with and curbing per section of the ordinance. Justification for this request is that additional improvements to this section of Deanhurst Avenue are not necessary based on the limited, I'm sorry, based on the limited residential properties that access this portion of the road and improvements associated with the parent loop provide function that the school district requires. This was reviewed by both our public works director and again, the engineering team, as well as our legal counsel and found to be correct.
And Chris, does this have a specific waiver number? Is it?
Correct me, Mr. Phillips, if we're wrong here, this would be the first waiver, correct? Or at least then, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Section 502.
There you go, Richard, there's your motion.
I like to make a proposal to approve the waiver for Section 502 for the Hoover Elementary Plan.
Second.
Thank you, all right.
Second waiver.
Did that answer your question?
No, not really, I don't really. Could you put that, say that more simply, please? Like what does that, what does that mean in regular language?
I can try to take a stab at it.
Thank you.
So Section 502 of the code requires that for most land development projects, they require a widening of the public right-of-way, a widening of the cartway, creating a larger street, more access in front of a land development. This not being a typical land development where you see houses being constructed and the need for the additional access. From an engineering standpoint, it's really not required and it would just create additional paving.
Thank you.
So, so in other words, this waiver will, in essence, not disrupt the lives of the residents that face Deanhurst?
That's one way to look at it, yes.
Okay.
Yes, it will be, it'll be less impact on the roadway on Deanhurst coming.
Okay.
And it's gonna save the district money, right?
It will and it will reduce impacts from stormwater. If the ordinance was followed, there'd be additional impervious area, which would be.
Yeah, we don't want that.
More impacts.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of waiver number one, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, Chris, read us the next waiver.
Waiver number two, Section 607, 607, curbing along 24th Street. The applicant is requesting that the requirements to provide curbing along 24th Street be waived. The justification for this request is that the existing parking lots have functioned at their current locations without significant issues and the majority of the traffic that currently uses the portion of 24th Street will utilize the new parent loop on the west side of the building. Additionally, the addition of a curb along this portion of 24th Street will concentrate stormwater flows and require additional inlets, piping, and potential drainage impoundment areas to control. Whereas the majority of the drainage along this road is currently dissipated within the grass and the shoulder of the existing road. We respectfully request consideration of these waivers, as well as the previous one, which we've already approved. Okay, I'm reading the letter now. For the preliminary plan in Section 402, that part of the submission that was actually brought out back in July, essentially what they're saying is, these are the same waivers that they had put in with the first plan. There were some changes, we made them go through the process again. One, to make sure everything was being met, two, for transparency, so on and so forth, and they did meet it. So essentially, that's what it says and that is the request of the waiver of 607. Once again, this was, the process was looked at by both our public works department, legal counsel, and our partners again at Fleming. And this was found that there would be, and our planning commission, I'm so sorry, and was found that it would not be an issue to approve.
Yeah, so I would take 607, the waiver for the curbing and then end that with Section 402 as two separate motions, 402 being the waiver of the preliminary plan requirements.
Right.
Okay, so in the form of motion, I'd like to approve waiver number two for Section 607 for the Hoover Land Development Plan.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Roger, any other comments for us?
We need a vote on that.
I, well, we've got a motion, I just wondered if.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Roger Phillips.
Moving ahead.
No, not yet, no, no, no. I just, you know, a second explanation for those of us.
Is it a similar explanation?
Yeah, this is, this is, this is for the, for the, along the roadway of 24th, going back around towards the, towards the curb, back towards the public works garage. Your code, your code requires that a curb have an eight-inch reveal. And with the type of grades in here and you're not really changing that roadway in any way by installing a curb, it would create actually an eight-inch wall between the two, between the property and the roadway and it would trap stormwater on both sides. There are no facilities being proposed to address the stormwater that would be on the street. So it would actually create more of a problem than what it would solve.
Thanks. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the second waiver, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, Chris, Section 402?
Yeah. I think you read it, right, Chris?
That was the one, correct.
Oh, sorry, the third one.
I was just reading what was the last paragraph that was contained in the letter for waiver request.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So Lee's then asked us to break up waiver number two into two parts, so.
Well, so just make sure you separately waive Section 402, although that was done with the prior plan. We want to make sure that we have it on the record that we're waiving the preliminary plan pursuant to Section 402.
Correct, so in form of motion, I'd like to approve the waving, waiver number two for Section 402 for the curbing also.
Second. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Richard?
It's waiver number three, Chris? Another one?
No, Roger, correct me if I'm wrong, we only had two waivers, am I?
I want to make sure.
Well, there were three waivers and I believe, I believe you went through and approved them all. There was, there was.
Right, because 402 would have been.
The roadway, the curb, and 402 was the third waiver. I think it was stated that it might have been the second.
I'm sorry, I lumped those two together, guys.
They're two separate waivers.
So.
I believe there was a vote on all three.
Yes.
Correct.
I will tell you, I'm sorry. I will tell you, I worked very closely on the plan with both KNW and Kerry Chippo from the school district on public safety issues and concerns and things like that. They've all been addressed, even down to the point of where the trash dumpster was gonna be located so it didn't disrupt residential traffic and residential neighborhood and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to know all those things were looked at as well.
That's great, thanks, Chris.
So in the form of motion, I'd like to approve the Camp Hill School District Hoover Land So, in the form of motion, I'd like to approve the Camp Hill School District Hoover Land Development Plan.
I could just add, subject to any outstanding comments from the Gannett Fleming's September 9th comment letter. Anything else from you, Roger?
You may want to add to that motion, there is the issue of the McAdam sidewalk that'll be going along 24th Street. The applicant's engineers indicated that that's, it's currently shown now, there's a revision that was requested by Public Works that will be shown on the final plan. Again, subject to our review and final revision, so, uh, if you want to make a contingent upon that also.
I like to make a contingent upon those also.
Zach seconded it, but he's muted.
Oh.
I've gotten really good at reading lips during this time of June.
All right, I believe we have a motion and a second. Any other questions for Roger or Chris?
And I just want to, my, I'm muted, um, I just wanted to clarify that this land development plan has been approved because it meets the criteria set forth in our SADO by any commission.
Yep.
That is correct. So, SADO was looked at, zoning was looked at, of course, streets, stormwater, and then public safety.
Okay. Um, and I just have one question, because I'm a little confused about this McAdam walkway you're talking about. And I know, you know, that hasn't been resolved yet based upon what you said, but is that the McAdam walkway in the lower right-hand corner of the plan that I'm seeing to the right of, uh, where it says existing trash dumpsters to remain?
Correct.
So, is that going to go on the grass right beside where the McAdam road is, or?
Yes, in that general area. Uh, I believe the way it's shown on the plan here, there was a request from Public Works to, to alter that slightly. I have a sketch of that, if, if you would like me to share my screen or I can just talk you through it. It's basically in the same location. It'll be in that, in that grass strip where there's utility poles along the side of that street there. It'll be in that area.
So, in other words, it will go the whole way around to the Public Works buildings?
It'll go down and connect to your, to, I believe, it's going to connect to the roadway there and there's a future chip trail, I believe.
Oh.
So, one of the things we were trying to, to look forward to is the bike, walk bike study has a walkway coming down through there in some fashion. So, all we wanted the school district to do was to at least bring it to that 90-degree corner right in front of the pump station.
Oh, okay.
We could direct walkers up 24th Street northbound or if they wanted to cross the roadway and go up to Fiala, the, uh, along the 581 wall. That's our goal, trying to put all the pieces of the puzzle together.
I see, okay. All right. Anything else? Okay, those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, Plan carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel, Alyssa Packer.
And this will be brief. I don't have anything to, um, update anyone on other than we're still working on the collective bargaining agreement with the police and that's going well, and I think we're waiting on some, um, language to be finalized from, uh, from our council related to the contract. But, um, hopefully, I, we're thinking next month, Pat? You're muted now, Pat.
I'm muted.
Sorry, I pulled a Steve Margison there. I'm sorry, Steve. Uh, yeah, we should have that done. I asked him about that the other day. He was, said he was finalizing it, so I think October's a good, a good way to set it.
Good.
That's everything.
Thank you. Uh, Richard, no Borough School District meeting?
Nope, and none scheduled.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, time for comments from council. I'm just going to read the, down the list. Um, Bonnie? Uh, no comments. Okay, Richard?
No, thank you.
Alyssa?
I just wanted to say that I really appreciated, um, the feedback from the community at the hearing and I, I look forward to, um, you know, bringing it back in a form that, um, addresses some of the concerns that were raised.
Carl?
Yeah, in a similar vein, um, you know, we are a great community, but we're far from perfect. We are trying to be better and, uh, as Alyssa said, we very much appreciate the dialogue and people raising concerns that we should be taking a look at, so, thank you.
Um, I actually have a comment. I want to remind everyone of the Harvest Hop on Saturday. The weather's supposed to be lovely and hopefully be a very successful day. Erin Broman?
Um, thank you. I, um, just want to say thank you again to everybody who participated tonight in both meetings. Um, because we're via Zoom, I feel like we have ample opportunity to attend these types of things and I'm so excited to see so many people today. Um, thank you for your comments, your concerns, and your participation. Tanya Ren, if you're still on the call, I want to let you know I'll discuss the handicap spots in the committee. Um, and Tim Jackson, if you're still on the call, thank you so much for your work, um, and your research that you've done, um, in conjunction with others in the community and Steve Margison, and I look forward to being part of that in the future. And I think that is all.
Zach Williard, any comments?
Just real quick on stormwater, you know, the first bills went out and I think they were all due. You know, Stormwater's been working hard. We have a number of projects that we still need to complete to meet our permit that expires at the end of 2023. I think that's right, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong. You know, we've whittled the list down from, you know, originally it was 10 million. We're down to about $1.4 million worth of projects that both, uh, you know, keep us in compliance and address any, you know, big hot topic concerns that, you know, could be a serious problem quickly, so, um, you know, we're all working on that and just wanted to let everyone know.
Thanks, Zach. Okay, we come to the second period of public comment. Please, uh, click on participant, raise your hand, it will turn blue.
Leah, along with Zach's, Leah, along with Zach's point, um, bringing up Stormwater, you know, we don't talk about some of the internal employees. Rachel, who's been doing all of the bill collection for Stormwater, has just done a wonderful job of working with people with their questions, talking them through it, dealing with the walk-in, so we only, we don't have a whole billing office. We have one person, so she's done a very admirable job of, of working through that transition. So, she doesn't get a lot of, we don't talk, you don't, you don't see the public talking about the sewer billing clerk, but she, she does, she, she's a, she's a rock star and she does a great job and we're lucky to have her.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to see that in the minutes, that'd be nice. She does work really hard and she's very smart. Um, so the first one is Stacy. Uh, I'm going to, I don't have a last name, but I'm going to lower your hand. Go ahead, Stacy. Okay, asking her to unmute.
While we find her, for public comment, should we still be saying addresses? I think we've been missing that recently. I don't know if that's.
You are right, Zach. I have, I have totally forgotten about that. Thank you. So Stacy, if you wouldn't mind giving us your address, please.
Um, sure. Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. Um, I'm on 29 South 29th Street. Um, and my comment was just that I wanted to thank, uh, the Public Works Committee for their support of the veterans' medallions. It sounds like there's still a little bit of a hoop to jump through to, to get those placed on the columbarium. But it sounds like we're headed in the right direction and I really appreciate that. As someone who has a veteran in the columbarium, um, I would very much like to see that recognized. So, thank you for the support.
Stacy, are you Stacy Rec?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure I get your full name in the minutes. Got it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we have Jennifer Hoover. I'm going to lower her hand and ask her to unmute herself. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer Hoover. I'm a resident of South 31st Street. Um, thank you for listening to concerns and delaying the consideration of the ordinance and sending it back to committee. I look forward to, um, seeing a further improved ordinance for consideration. Um, and then also, I just noticed, um, knowing that the council adopted, uh, procedures and standards over the summer, if I recall correctly, part of that document provided and required that committees take notes and those notes be included in the council packet. Um, my review of the council packet tonight showed that neither the Borough Managers' report or the committee notes were included. Um, I just bring that to your attention because I find those committee notes very helpful. So I would ask that you adhere to the policy and include them in every council packet.
I, I'm almost positive that the minutes were forwarded and to council, it should have been in the.
Are they in separate, are they in a separate link and not in the packet?
No, they're, they're in the packet. I know, because I read them all, there's pages of them, yeah.
I read them all as well, but they were separate from my.
They were separate, yeah, they weren't in the packet.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
All right. All right, any other public comments? Any other raised hands? Uh, there's one.
Tanya Ren, I'm going to lower her hand. Go ahead, Tanya.
Unmute yourself, Tanya.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, Erin, thank you, I'm still here. And then I just had a quick suggestion or question. With the Harvest Hop on Saturday and the chicken barbecue and just, um, hopefully we'll have lots of people downtown. In the past, it's been really busy for people to try to cross the street at 22nd Street by Stevie's and Zag's in my place. And I wasn't sure if, um, anybody from the fire station or a police officer could help pedestrians with crossing the street there, and maybe some of the other crosswalks.
And Tanya, I'm sorry, Zach reminded me, we haven't been asking addresses. Could you just give your address?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's 1921 Princeton Ave.
Thank you.
So, just a suggestion.
Yeah, I, I think they're, they do, the police are aware of that. I'm sure Mary Beth's working on that with her group.
How many hours does the Harvest Hop run again?
Yeah.
Is it four hours?
Ten to four. But even if somebody's there from like 10 to 2 or, I don't know.
I, I know that the police have been there at some of the events in the past. I don't know if there's a plan for that, uh, this time, but, um, Tanya, it reminds me with the streetscape, one of the things that we're proposing for that, uh, specific intersection or right near it is a, uh, rapid flashing beacon, uh, crosswalk. So people press the button and it flashes and, and it's great for pedestrian safety, along with some other things that we have in the plan. So you just give me an opportunity to make a plug there.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Appears to be it.
All right, Erin?
Um, can I just say thanks to all the, the, all the members of the Borough Council and community here that are staff who just sit for these meetings, because you're amazing. I appreciate you. Um, and I'd like to make a motion to Richard.
Wait a second?
Second.
All right, motion, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, have a great night, everybody.